Good evening. The December 18th, 2023 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We will now have Ms. Ledbetter lead us in the invocation.
I invite you to pray in a manner consistent with your beliefs as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Lord, we pray you would be with us in all that we do, all that we plan, and all that we deliberate. Tonight, we ask that you bless us with wisdom, patience, and grace as we work to reflect you in our actions, attitudes, and words. During this joyous holiday season, we pray you guide us away from discord and remind us that our common goals, experiences, hopes, and dreams unite us in our humanity far more than they can ever divide us. This we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. We'll now have the Boy Scout troop from Hanover, Troop 446, come up and join us and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Special thanks to our scouts tonight from Troop 446. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for being shining examples of good citizenship for your peers. I hope you all have a lovely holiday season, and I hope you hang out as long as you can manage tonight.[134.01][134.01](Laughter). Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council. We did receive two submissions. One was for the invitation to audience. The other was that continuation from Pastor Tillet from last time. It was actually testimony on 7823, so we had gone ahead and added it to that particular file, and that summary is posted on the website.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. As of now, I have Mr. Kurt Svensson here, prepared with remarks. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to bring remarks not on the printed Mr. Svensson, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Svensson. I live in Arnold, Maryland. I'm here to express my concern that the process leading up to the introduction of legislation often lacks public engagement and transparency. My written testimony provides a number of recent examples of comprehensive bills which have purportedly undergone significant study in stakeholder engagement, yet there's no transparency of the study efforts or data reviewed prior to introduction or even afterward. Most often, the first chance for a citizen to get any background information about upcoming legislation is at a council work session, which may not even happen, like with the school's APF bill. If a working group is formed to explore options, engage stakeholders, and draft legislation, why is its membership, meeting schedule, and agendas, data reviewed in reports, not routinely made publicly available? Why are the many boards and commissions not asked to review and make recommendations on drafts of those comprehensive bills? My written testimony provides examples of such missed opportunities and suggests a fundamental reason why this happens. This sentiment is often expressed by supporters of bills like these. "Let's not make perfection the enemy of the good." That's great political prose, but I offer an alternative translation. "It's good enough for government work." As a county citizen, I'm not asking for perfection. I'm making known what I think is needed for better government. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. One day, you're going to get that quiz. I would like to, totally extemporaneously, I would really like to support the comments that you have just heard through this past year as we try to follow what's happening with the zoning changes and proposals in the land use. The people that I know are just in a turmoil of what's going on? What's going to happen? What is this? What does this mean? So, hooray and hallelujah. There are two other things. Some time ago, several of the members of the council expressed their deep concern and their genuine emotional distress and disturbance about the loss of life from the violence in the communities connected to guns and other weapons. And this week, this past week, on WMAU, which is an NPR radio station, there was a very interesting program about an economist at the University of Chicago. And I know some of you just love Milton Freeman and his 1972 opinion piece in the New York Times that the job of corporations is to make profits. He got other things into that paper, but there are a lot of other people who'd have a different view of the role of corporations, which includes building strong, sturdy communities so that everyone in the community has a reasonable chance at survival, a decent income, it's a livable income, and healthcare, and all of these other things that you all are aware of. But at any rate, in this particular program on WMAU, this economist at the University of Chicago is now the leader of the Crime Institute, or something to that general nature, and people, they bring in experienced officers who are taking on leadership roles from all across the country. Because now I've got another quotation. You guys are probably too young to have read that book called The Peter Principle. But the fundamental rule in The Peter Principle is employees get promoted until they reach the level of their incompetence. Once they get there, they've got that job. And so what this economist found and argued is...
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Provide training for them. I...
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at invitation to audience? Seeing no movement, invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this evening? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Radvian, so moved.
Is there a second?
Fielder, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 4th, 2023.
Minutes of December 4th, 2023. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Radvian and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 4th, 2023? Second?
Ledbetter, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of the December 4th, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 9323, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions, Participation, Transferred Service, Employees Retirement Plan, Fire Service Retirement Plan, Police Service Retirement Plan. Bill Number 9423, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses Business Complexes in a Residential District.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
We have no resolutions to be introduced this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 78-23.
Bill Number 7823, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Essential Worker Housing Access Act of 2023.
This is an administration bill. When your team is assembled, Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to be here this evening. Joining me at the table is a group you all have gotten pretty well familiar with, our Deputy C.A.O. for Land Use, Mr. Evelyn, Jenny Jarkowski, our OPZ Director, Aaron Karpowitz, our Director of ACDS, Lynn Miller, from OPZ, I can never remember your title, Lynn, sorry, our planning expert, Lynn Miller, and Lori Blair-Klasmyer from our Office of Law. We have discussed this bill at length. I want to sort of make a few comments, and we stand ready to hear the testimony from all the folks here who have advocated for it and are here to talk about the bill. This bill comes from the county executive. It is an important tool that is needed to tackle our affordable housing crisis. The bill will ensure additional availability of affordability for essential workers and folks of moderate income. A lot of work has gone into this bill. Dozens of meetings, the county executive has met with the building industry, with the Affordable Housing Coalition, with the Growth Action Network, with dozens and dozens of advocates over many, many months, many, many meetings. We had a work group that worked hard on this bill before the pandemic. A lot of work has gone in. No bill is perfect. We are disappointed to see some of the amendments the council has tacked on, like the removal of single-family detached dwelling units. But that's okay. This is a step forward. We believe firmly that the council should pass this bill today. We'll hear from others that they think that maybe the bill isn't ready. We ask the council to pass this bill so that we can have a mandate for inclusionary zoning, and we can move forward with our Planning and Zoning Office, with ACDS, with council members, with advocates, with developers, on the hard work of implementation and perfection of this policy. This policy exists in most of our neighboring counties. This policy takes many different forms across the country. No policy is perfect. This bill is ready to pass tonight. We want to keep the momentum moving. Anarundel County has been noticed statewide as a leader. We have done innovative things on housing. We have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that is a dedicated revenue source. We passed a bill just the other meeting that helps expand additional access to workforce housing. We have a number of next steps that we need to take. This bill is not everything that will solve this problem, but this is a key piece. And the administration, county executive, and a number of advocates are going to talk to you tonight. This is the threshold piece. Before we have affordability, it is very difficult to build the support that we need to do to increase supply, to address some of the other challenges that we have in our code. We stand ready to work with the council on those issues. Let's get this bill passed. Let's get to work on our next steps. Happy to answer any questions and look forward to the debate tonight.
Is there any discussion at this time from my colleagues? Seeing no lights, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 78-23. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, we did. Madam Chair, members of the council, we received nine submissions through the online testimony tool. Everyone here received a copy of that via email, and it is posted online, and it will be added to the record.
Thank you. We'll now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. We will, will the following persons please come up to the table, take a seat, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. At this time, I have Dr. Linda Bonner, Louise Sherricks, Kurt Svensson, and Mary Grace FitzHenry.
Good evening, and thank you again for the opportunity to provide our comments to you. And we also want to thank you for the important work that you're doing with respect to implementing affordable housing in this county. We're aware that it requires a lot of introspection, compromise, and a lot of time to accomplish. We previously stated our support. We continue to support this bill. Even though it's not the perfect or final solution, it represents one segment of the workforce, we still have others that we need to address in this. But even with these limitations, again, as previously stated, it's important to pass this bill this evening. We all knew that it was going to take us bold steps to accomplish affordable housing in the county, and we want to remind you that you also said you would help us fight this as well. We don't view the results of this bill, whatever it may be, to be a closed door, quite the opposite. We believe that whatever the outcome may be, that the results can be leveraged towards developing stronger actions that eliminate particularly the existence of exclusionary housing in this county that make a real difference, and we're ready to be a partner with you. I'd like to reinforce a few things that we find in this, throughout this process. One, we believe that a major evaluation of the county zoning process needs to occur, particularly for the land use and the planning areas, and how decisions are made to accommodate creative housing. And with respect to affordable housing, we believe that legislative changes are needed to enable missing middle housing to occur. This is an important part if we're to move forward. We also believe that analysis of the county's permitting process needs to occur, particularly defining the impediments in the review process and the costs and the time that's required. These are some significant things that we are hearing from the members of the community that we are listening to. We urge you to reach agreement on this vital legislation and further your commitment to affordability of housing for the county residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bonner. Ms. Sherricks?
Hi. I'm Louise Sherricks. I moved to Anarundel County 23 years ago, and I've had the pleasure of raising three sons and three grandchildren here. I'm a bus driver. I drive all through the county, and that's what I do for a living. In 2016, my son was evicted from his apartment along with his three children. When we went to social services, we were told that we could go to Sarah's House or possibly get rooms in a hotel. There was nowhere to go. So my son and his three children ended up living with me for six years, because that's pretty much how long it takes to get over an eviction because you haven't paid your rent. We, he can't afford to live here. He was a car mechanic, he was an auto collision specialist, and he worked at Pizza Hut. He worked two jobs, and he still couldn't keep up with the rent for his children and his wife. And I don't just see it, but obviously, I've seen it for my own family, but I see it with my coworkers. I see it as I'm driving kids back towards the school, that we need to be able to house our workforce. People come in from Baltimore County to drive a bus, and they can't afford to live here. We did our best, and we were fortunate to be able to take our children in and support them for the six years that it took to recover. And we mucked in, and we did our best, and I'm hoping that you'll do your best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Svensson?
I am Kurt Svensson. I live in Arnold, Maryland. Tonight is an important meeting for this bill. Either you're going to call for a final vote, or it's the last night for amendments to be approved for your next meeting on January 2nd, which is the last opportunity to approve this bill before it otherwise expires on January 5th. My written testimony offers two comments that are still germane to the currently amended bill. I'm only going to speak to my second comment. I and others initially questioned the proposed bill's preferential treatment given to local government employees. Despite the passage of amendments to fix this, preferential treatment still remains in Bill 7823. Section 1712106D allows the administrator to adjust the income requirements for eligibility only for employees of the county, the County Board of Education, and the city of Annapolis. Given the juicy defined benefit pension and health insurance benefits provided to many of these local government employees, they are almost certainly much better off economically than other essential workers with the same income level. As you all should know, the total compensation package, which includes such benefits, matters. Therefore, this preferential treatment in Section 1712106D should be removed. I'm not asking for perfection, but if this preferential treatment given to local government employees is not removed by amendment, I am asking that an explanation be offered to the public tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. FitzHenry?
Good evening. My name is Mary Grace FitzHenry, and I'm here on behalf of the Anarundel County Association of Realtors, 1521 Ritchie Highway, Arnold, Maryland, 21012. First, I would like to express my gratitude to the county council members and county staff for their dedicated efforts in promoting diverse housing options in Anarundel County. Your hard work is acknowledged, and we appreciate your commitment to addressing housing issues that we currently face. Nevertheless, compelling ideas often demand substantial effort and occasionally need a return to the drawing board to ensure that the concept is not compromised by rushing it. I am of the opinion that a bill featuring nearly 20 amendments should undergo reconsideration and return to the drawing board to make sure it's researched and written properly in a way that works best for Anarundel County. At present, Anarundel County lacks the capacity to accommodate the proposed legislation in its current form. It would be more prudent to first revamp zoning regulations and increase building permit issuance before addressing the bill as it stands. Efficiently addressing zoning concerns in Anarundel County first with a specific emphasis on affordability is essential for facilitating a smoother integration of affordable housing. Initiatives such as MPDUs and missing middle housing, coupled with collaborative endeavors involving local authorities, developers, and residents, can significantly improve the county's housing market and contribute to the realization of long-term community development objectives. In conclusion, I urge you all to carefully consider the concerns raised and vote against this legislation as it's currently written. While I appreciate the ongoing efforts to enhance housing options in Anarundel County, I believe that a more thoughtful approach, including further research and refinement, is necessary for the success of our community. By doing so, we can pave the way for a more sustainable and effective solution to the housing challenges that we currently face. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. At this time, this panel can be dismissed. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill 78-23? Please come forward, take a seat at the table, and when it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Starting here, Ms. Fox.
Hi, my name is Kate Fox. I live in Davidsonville, and I'm Chair of the Legislative Committee of Growth Action Network. Growth Action Network continues to support this bill as amended. We need much affordable housing in various forums as possible to meet the various needs of working class individuals and their families in the county. It may not be a perfect bill, but MPDUs would be one tool in the toolbox for affordable housing in the county. If we want to recruit and retain quality employees in all work sectors, we need to provide them with housing options they can afford. We urge this council, please, to pass this bill and to continue to develop more tools to increase the stock of affordable housing for the benefit of the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Deborah Gundry. Annapolis Parkside Preserve. As I woke up in my MPDU townhome this morning, I just was really grateful to be there. And as flawed as this bill currently is, I beg you to pass it tonight, or at the very least on January 2nd, so that it doesn't die. I just, I hear what the eloquent realtor had to say, but I just don't concur. The housing development on Riva Road is advertising luxury units for rent, starting at only 645 square foot studio apartments. And guess what the rent is? For one month, it's $2,465. And for a two-bedroom, $4,750. That is a lot of money. A studio, if that bus driver who spoke earlier lived in a studio, she wouldn't have been able to have her son and three children there for occupancy reasons. We need to pass this bill, even though the zoning laws are not perfect either. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Rebecca Tucker, 2010 Eagle Landing Way, Odington, Maryland. We've heard a lot from a lot of people about reasons to support this bill, why this bill is good, but I wanted to talk specifically to Ms. Ledbetter, Ms. Fielder, and Mr. Volkey, who I'm probably going to be the most likely knows on this bill. And I know that there are reasons against that. I know that the conservative argument for affordable housing is build more and the prices will go down. Well, in Anarundel County, yes, the zoning does prevent that, but it also, our tourism industry and our restaurant industry relies on the health of the bay and having building not be so quick. So from what I've been hearing, talking to other conservatives, this does seem to be a really good stopgap. My parents support this bill. They are residents of District 5. They see it as a way to not be a handout, to not be any sort of, the sort of assistance that they would normally be against. This is purely on developers, existing building that is going to happen to be set aside for our people of the county that we need to live in the county and to be able to afford to continue to live in the county. So I just want the three of you to think about that, and I hope you consider voting yes on this bill as the whole council should. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hello, my name is Kenyatta Rawl. I'm speaking on behalf of Breaking Boundaries Environmental LLC and your Father's Day Foundation. And I'm also speaking on behalf of the African-American communities of the Broadneck Peninsula. And I'm here to just make mention that I do hope that you all are able to forward this. There's been a major injustice done throughout the county for affordable housing for African-American historic communities. There's been systemic racist discriminatory practices in housing communities that do not allow African-Americans to purchase land in their communities, such as Cape Sinclair not allow African-Americans to purchase land in their communities such as Cape Sinclair and Martin's Cove. And so we are here, I'm here, to speak up for this corner of the county that has really been struck in by a lot of these affordable housing issues. I live in a studio apartment right now in Eastport. I've been living there for about four years now. I have two children and it is hard, you know, check to check. I've been homeless before, you know, so the affordable housing is a real issue, not to mention this being one of the most expensivest places to live, not just in the area, but in the country, the DMV. And so with that, those confining factors, including environmental justice, these close proximity African-American communities to brownfields in the area, which are over 40 in Anaral County. So take a look at that if you like, but that's what I'm here to advocate for this environmental injustice that has been happening historically for the last 100 or so more years. So something needs to happen.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Trudy McFall. I live at 205 Scott Drive in Annapolis, Maryland, and I'm here tonight, as I have been on other occasions, as chairman of the Anarundale Affordable Housing Coalition, whose 57 members involved in affordable housing and services to residents, enthusiastically even passionately support this bill. You know my opinion, if you've read the Capitol, we seem to have made the headline there. I just want to say I've watched the process and I sort of don't know what more you could ask of the people who are trying to advance this concept. To me, this bill has gotten increasingly conservative and I don't mean that in a negative way. It's a balance of the interests of the private market development community, who of course are facing some new requirements and they're going to negotiate hard. And I think you all have negotiated hard back. There's some things that I wish were a little bit different in the bill, like not being so restrictive on who could benefit from it. But I think now is the time to think that we have come this far and as our editor said, that we could do it again, that we could come this far, work this hard, take this concept, know how it's working in other places, and back off of it again. I just, I think the reaction to that action would be exceedingly negative. People come up to me and say all the time how much they are enthusiastic about this, something that is new in the affordable housing field. And I would just say to you, you know well, you've passed a number of other affordable housing things, so they haven't always been perfect. So you've amended them. You've learned, you've taken the experience and you've amended them if need be. So I'm just here to say, please, please, can't we get this done this time? I think it, I think it would look poorly on us that we can't as a community do the negotiations and conversations we've had and make the changes and gotten to a bill that is at least acceptable to most of the advocates. So I'm just saying, please, please, could we get this passed? Thank you.
Mr. Dull.
Good afternoon, or good evening. David Dull, 313 Georgia Avenue, Glen Burnie. Just wanted to quote C.S. Lewis real quick. Of all the tyrannies, a tyranny sincerely exercised for the good of its victims may be the most oppressive. It would be better to live under robber barons than under omnipotent moral busybodies. The robber baron's cruelty may sometimes sleep, his cupidity may at some point be satiated, but those who torment us for our own good will torment us without end, for they do it with the approval of their own conscience. Once again, I come up here to say that I very much agree with a lot of the testimony that has been brought forth by the people in the audience. We definitely have a problem with our housing. Unfortunately, I don't believe that this bill is the, what is it, the good is opposite of the bad or the perfect? Like this isn't a good bill either. This, this, first of all, it says essential worker, as if you guys can decide what an essential worker is. Like any job where you put food on the table for your children, that's an essential job. And most of the people who need affordable housing aren't working these essential worker jobs. They're working at retail stores or 7-Eleven or whatever, moderately priced dwelling. Like what, what is that? Why can't we make those decisions? Why are you making the decisions on what a moderately priced dwelling is? And I understand that there might be rent, you know, $2,000 in rent on Reva Road, but that's because it's in Reva Road. That's because it's all built up and it's luxury apartments. You can get a room for rent or you can get something a lot cheaper in another neighborhood or another area and we could actually open that up if we just changed our zoning regulations and not just so that people can do whatever they want, but because it actually works. And you know, I don't understand why we want the government to get involved in this when like we, I see all the other bills here. It's just zoning law after zoning law where you guys are making decisions on who's going to be the winners and the losers. I think we should make those decisions. You're very welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'm going to do one last call. For folks who want to testify on Bill 78-23 at this time, please come forward and take I think you're it. State your name and address for the record.
Ellie Nelson, 45 Townpines Court. I'll be quick. I was here a few weeks ago with ASME. I'm not speaking as a member of ASME. I'm speaking as an employee of the Anaral County Public Library System. I just wanted to thank you for expanding the scope of the bill to not only include direct county employees. I've been, I went to college in Anaral County. I've been living here for almost three and a half years. I've been rent burdened the entire time. And while I recognize that there is a great push or like a great demand for this housing and we don't solve all of it with this legislation, I really appreciate the amendments that have gone forth to expanding that access and working for it. And I would like us to pass that bill as amended tonight. Thank you.
At this time, the public hearing on Bill... Oh, excuse me. You blended in. Excuse me. State your name and address for the record.
Kenley Bray, YVS Law, 185 Admiral Cochran Drive. I've testified before on this bill. I appreciate all of the time, hard work, care, input, and effort that the administration and the council has put into considering this very important legislation. I think it's been said, this is a, not the only way to address the very real and very critical shortage of affordable housing in our county. But when I look around and my experience as a land use attorney for over 20 years, I see so many differences between Anarundale County and the surrounding jurisdictions that have adopted similar legislation. And we are not doing anything to address those differences. There's no proposals on the table to address those differences. And so the idea that the, a mandate is the first solution to addressing affordable housing, I think is misguided and I would urge you to vote this bill down tonight. I want to point out, just briefly, there was an article in the Baltimore Business Journal on Friday, an interview with Toby Bezuto. The Bezuto Group is a developer with about 100, $1.2 billion in the pipeline and a 35-year history in our region. And Mr. Bezuto expects a down cycle in 2024, noting that it is nearly impossible right now to finance multifamily housing projects. And I'm very concerned that at this time, with a not fully thought out attempt at addressing affordable housing, we will see an immediately depressive effect on supply across the board in Anarundale County. And so I would urge you to table this and we're to vote it down tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies for overlooking you. The public hearing on Bill Number 7823 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7823.
Bill Number 7823, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Subdivision and Development Zoning: Essential Worker Housing Access Act of 2023.
Is there any further discussion from my colleagues on this bill? The administration? Oh. Ms. Hummer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If Ms. Hummer wants to go first, that's fine. I may.
No, go ahead.
So I think we've, we've made our case. We've discussed this bill at length. I just want to ask this council, all seven of you, to vote this bill favorable tonight. Do not make the mistake that this council made 20 years ago and left this county without an MPDU law. Thank you.
Ms. Hummer.
We have a housing crisis in our county, in our state, and the nation, and we have too little housing available. And that's caused the rents and home payments to become unaffordable for many families and individuals. We are currently debating a bill that would require more affordable housing units be included in new developments. My concern is that in requiring these units, one consequence could be that fewer units overall are built, which puts us in an even more dire situation. How do we balance the need for more inventory with more affordability? I have worked diligently to amend this bill to strike that balance between affordability and inventory growth. The council has already tackled some of the areas that can stymie housing. We passed an adequate public facilities bill around school capacity that removes some of the barriers to housing development. We passed an auxiliary dwelling unit bill that allows for more innovative construction of small houses and apartments. And just last meeting, we passed Chairman Pickard's bill expanding our workforce housing capacity. This legislation directly targets housing for some of our lowest paid workers, lowest wage workers. But we need to do more. We need to modernize our zoning codes to remove outdated and inefficient barriers. We need to improve the timeliness and efficiency of our permitting processes. We need to incentivize creative and innovative construction and to make a dent in our housing shortage, we need to go big. I will be supporting this bill tonight, but I want to be very clear that I think it is a bill that could be and can be better. Repeatedly, I'm hearing from the public that they are in support of more affordable housing, which is wonderful. But as we dive deeper, I find there is a misunderstanding of what this particular bill actually does and what its impact will be. Despite information that has been shared, this bill will not ensure that essential workers can access affordable housing where they work, nor will it ensure that affordable housing opportunities are available throughout the county. The vast majority of the people on our affordable housing waitlist will not qualify for this program. Can it be a housing help for our middle-income workers? Certainly. But the actual number of units it will produce is speculative and will make only a small dent in our housing backlog. I would have preferred that we tackle modernizing the code and other measures we need first that could then make this bill better and more impactful. However, even with my reservations, I think this bill is a starting point to build on. And if this bill passes tonight, I'm committed to continue working on the changes we need to both increase our supply, increase our affordability, and make this legislation more effective. If this bill doesn't pass, I maintain that same commitment as well as a commitment to working toward crafting MPDU legislation that incorporates all the positive aspects of this bill we see tonight while improving on the weaknesses. We have a great deal of work to do and this discussion of MPDUs is just one step in a very long journey. So, thank you.
Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. So as you might have guessed, if you've been to the last few meetings, I am strongly in support of this bill. But I think it's important to take a minute to say why. I think this is such an important bill and it's so important that we pass it now and not wait another moment to do it. First, just to start out, the coalition of different groups that have come to the table to advocate for this is one of the broadest coalitions I have seen for about any legislation in this county on the five years that I've been on the council. To have the Growth Action Network and housing advocates coming together to advocate for affordable housing is something I would not have predicted five years ago and I consider to be a remarkable, a remarkable step in saying, we need to be smart about how our county grows, but we cannot ignore, we cannot stop all development at the expense of individuals who are struggling to afford housing. I also want to be clear, to clarify what I heard in the public testimony, there is absolutely no limitation on workers to certain employers in this bill. That is simply not the case. And also to the, despite testimony to the contrary, there are many AACPS employees who do not have generous pensions, who are barely making ends meet and who work multiple jobs in order to make ends meet and are very much in need of affordable housing. I understand that we have to work with our builders. And in fact, I appreciate the work that our builders, our developers have done in terms of cooperation to help make this a better bill and make this a workable bill. We have to make sure that they can get the financing they need to build their projects. There's just, if the financing does not work, the projects don't get built. And at this particular time, there are indeed real struggles. You know, we are looking at high interest rates, but the current interest rates and the current conditions are not permanent. They will change and we can be creative. We can find ways to make those numbers work. And if those methods aren't in this current bill, well, guess what? We are the county council and we can bring another bill to make sure that we put in flexibility that we don't see in this current bill. So let's start right now. In addition to wanting our builders to be able to pencil out the numbers, we also represent tens of thousands of residents whose numbers we already know do not pencil out. We have people who, and we've heard many of them, who have faced homelessness, who have faced moving into crowded situations because there is not affordable housing. That should be a red flag and an alarm for all of us. And I know we talk about doing things like increasing supply and updating the code to increase supply, but that is not going to be enough. If our, if our markets were that successful, I would be optimistic that this, that, you know, maybe we could somehow create affordable housing without this type of bill. But we are 13,000 units short right now. And if we wait for the market to catch up with supply, we're going to be waiting a very long time. And there are already people in this county who have waited a very long time and we should not allow them to wait any longer. If supply were enough, we'd have something. In fact, we'd have something in Annapolis. The only way we're getting affordable housing in Annapolis is because the city of Annapolis is demanding it. And we will be getting it in the parole town center moving forward because we were smart enough to put in MPDU provision in that, in our recent update. We don't have it unfortunately for the 800 new units that are on Reva Road. And you heard the prices from one of, or the rent prices, the rental rates from one of my constituents. Twenty-four, $2,465 for a 600 some odd square foot studio. For those of you that are lucky enough to own a home, how many of you pay that much even in a mortgage payment? Very few. You might be in that ballpark. How many of us pay, if you're lucky enough to own a home, $4,075 in a mortgage payment? But that's where we are. That's where we are for the two-bedroom apartments on Reva Road, as well as most new single-family homes in this county, when we're talking about median single-family home price in the 500s and interest rates around 7%. Supply will not be enough. We cannot wait for it to catch up with demand and I think that means that it is essential, essential for our essential workers. And essential workers, whether you're the person, I always say, you know what? The person that is operating the drive-through at McDonald's might not be essential to everyone, but to the person who works the midnight shift and needs to get something on their way home, that drive-through worker is absolutely essential. And as one of our folks testifying pointed out, that person is absolutely essential to their family members who rely on them. So let's do what we know we need to do to get the ball rolling. We've got to start somewhere. We can't let perfect be the enemy of the good. We can't, supply alone won't do it. We'll be waiting another decade or two if supply were enough. So I... So I urge my colleagues to listen to the many, many people that have come and testified and shared their stories and shared their pain. Because what are we here for? If we're not here to respond to the people who are crying out for help and saying they need us to do better and they need our county to work better for us, what are we here for? Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues at this time?
I'll take a moment to comment on this bill. Many here tonight know that housing policy has captured my head and heart over the last few years. I've researched existing housing policies in neighboring counties. I've met with advocates that have positioned themselves on both sides of this bill. As others have testified to, we agree that affordability must be in the forefront of all of our land use decisions going forward. My concern with Bill 7823 lies with the nuts and bolts of this very specific piece of legislation before us. I'm looking for results that will give us the biggest impact and the most housing opportunities for our families, a policy that rises to the aspirations of the talking points associated with this bill. Two of the key takeaways I have learned from my research into inclusionary zoning policies are that they require a specific, a significant and sustained level of market rate development to be impactful. We are experiencing historic lows in residential building permits in Anarundel County. Secondly, impactful inclusionary zoning also requires robust development incentives. Some jurisdictions, even in Maryland, provide tax incentives to meet the public good. I still strongly believe that the best way forward is to complete an affordable housing and land use analysis. It should include a review of the zoning code and land use reforms needed to meet established goals, and it should set evaluation criteria to measure success. I'm disappointed that this is where we are with this bill. As a strong housing advocate, I'm in a painful position with this legislation. I respect my colleagues. I respect the work that's been done. But tonight, I'll be voting my conscience. And that's just it. I'm voting my conscience. I'm committed to crafting good housing policy and want to work with my colleagues to create housing legislation, including potentially an MPDU policy tailored for Anarundel County that is predicated on the balanced equation of housing production. I hope my colleagues and the administration will work together to move this conversation
Madam Secretary.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to express my utter disappointment if this bill does not pass tonight. There is no excuse for this. We have had so much time to work on this, and we still have the future to work on this. I'm just taking a moment to express my utter disappointment and disbelief that this is where we are at. We have people that are literally coming to us that have showed up meeting after meeting after meeting to say they want our help, and we're turning our backs on them.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7823.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
No.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Bill Number 7823 has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 84-23.
Bill Number 8423, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Public Works, Odenton Town Center, Master Plan.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, when your team is assembled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Christina Pampa from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. This bill was discussed at a prior work session and at a prior hearing. This is an update to the 2016 Odenton Town Center Master Plan, which falls in District 4. And I know there are several amendments, so I'll withhold further comments so we can get right to the amendments. And I have staff here with me to, we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 84-23. We do have some speakers, I believe. Ms. Darby Hall, you signed up ahead of time. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill Number 84-23. My name is Darby Hall, and I've lived in Odenton for almost four years and routinely walk on sidewalks near much of the areas slated for development under this plan and areas that were recently developed into an apartment complex and new homes. I've noticed there is a substantial amount of wildlife in this area and would like to request the council consider ways to assist such wildlife, especially species that may not be able to easily relocate once development begins. I routinely see turtles trying to cross local roads in this area, as well as a lot of road kill. I would also like to request that when reviewing development in the county as a whole, the council consider using wildlife crossings and other measures to reduce the amount of roadkill in this area. Finally, I believe the council should also consider ways to incentivize the redevelopment of vacant buildings on already cleared land and preserve mature forested areas that improve air quality in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to testify on 84-23 at this time? We'll now close the public hearing on Bill 84-23. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8423.
Bill Number 8423, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Public Works, Odenton Town Center, Master Plan. Madam Chair, can I just mention real quick for the record, we did receive two submissions of testimony through our online testimony tool. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to go right to amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2, this amendment requires a structure greater than 1,000 square feet comply with the urban design and architectural requirements.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment.
Yes. So this is the first of several amendments we're going to see tonight. I want to thank all the staff at OPZ, as well as various community members who've been very involved in getting this. The intent and purpose of the Odenton Town Center is to incentivize the responsible development around the areas, especially around our Mark Station, and to really uplift this community. And it builds in flexibility so that we can bring in new businesses and do, and revitalize some of the rather blighted areas that may be there. And so all of these amendments, we feel, are ones that remove some of the barriers and increase some flexibility as we move forward. So this First Amendment is just increasing, the original bill says that any, a structure, additional structure of 120 square feet would have to adhere to the urban design and architectural requirements, and we've just increased that to 1,000 square feet because that is more of a normal size for any structure that may be built. And I ask your support for this amendment.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Oh, motion to adopt, please.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Would the administration like to respond?
I guess I will just take a moment and briefly say, I really appreciate the sponsor of all the amendments that we're going to be discussing here shortly for working so closely with OPZ and the Office of Law, so we're fully supportive of all of them. Urge your support. Thank you.
Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 3.
Amendment Number 3, this amendment clarifies that unless otherwise provided, Subtitle 8 of Title 7 of Article 17, and the Odenton Town Center Master Plan supersede any other provision of code or county manuals to the extent of any conflict.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment.
Yes, hold on a second. I'm not, I've lost it on here, but this one is just a clarification of code. The language was a little bit confusing, and we just put it more in line with other areas of the code to make it align the same, same language. And I ask your support and move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the administration like to respond?
We would just urge your support. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 4.
Amendment Number 4, this amendment modifies the requirement to provide activity space at a rate to at least one square foot of activity space per every 10 square feet of floor area for non-residential and residential uses, excluding single-family dwellings, and removes the requirement that in the Odenton Town Center core and transition zoning districts, 50% of the total activity space be public activity space.
Ms. Hummer, this is also your amendment.
Yes, we're just clarifying that single-family dwellings do not have to provide public activity space because I don't think we all want to park in our front yard. But, and also, it just removes the 50% threshold for the public space, for the public spaces in there. And so I ask your support and move to, move the motion.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
Administration.
Urge the council to adopt this amendment as well.
Any further discussion? Ms. Radvian.
I just want to clarify that this amendment does not actually change that ratio of one foot of activity space per 10 square feet. It's just clarifying that it's not applying to single, so this is already the ratio in the bill.
Correct. It's the same ratio, we're just excluding single-family homes.
Got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Actually, Ms. Radvian, we pulled out the parole bill and took a quick peek at it while we were looking at this. And I think what we realized is we needed to make sure that we had the 10%, or I'm sorry, the one square foot for every 10 square feet of floor area, both for non-residential and residential uses. Previously, we didn't have the supply for residential. So for instance, if you're going, if a developer's going to develop, let's say, a multifamily project of apartments, you are going to want activity space, but in that case, it's probably going to be private just for those residents. And that's one of the reasons we took out the public activity space, but we did want to make sure it applied to residential, like multifamily.
Thank you.
Ms. Hummer.
I think, did I already move it?
You did, but your light's on.
Oh, I.
I didn't know if you wanted to say something. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 4.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5.
Amendment Number 5, this amendment removes the requirement for structured parking.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment as well.
This one's self-explanatory. We are taking out any requirement for structured parking garage for units, looking at the planned things in there. We don't feel that there was a need for that, and it could be a barrier to development. So I urge my colleagues to support, and I move the motion.
Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
Would the administration like to respond?
Urge your support.
Are we good? Ms. Fiedler.
So is there, just to be clear, is there no parking requirement?
No, just no structured parking. The original bill had that it, they would require, it'd have structured parking above 200 units, and that was taken out. But there are still parking, surface parking requirements. They just don't have to build a parking garage.
May I follow?
Of course.
So in previous bills that we have worked on, you know, I just, I'm trying to marry this with moving away from increased impervious surface, and I would think that if we're creating parking structures, we're reducing impervious surface, but this, it's now not required.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We had extensive discussion about this based on some stakeholder comments that were received. There was a lot of discussion about this for parole and whether or not we had the right threshold to require structured parking, especially for a multifamily. The market in Odenton is different than the market in parole. If a developer needs to, let's say they have a very tight site, and maybe they need to provide some of their parking in structured parking, but not all of it, they're still, they have the freedom to do that. But we felt ultimately, after discussions, that this may, in Odenton, end up being a barrier where you would not see land developed that you want developed. And so we ultimately came to the conclusion that, for Odenton, we wanted to take this out. Now, in the 2016 Master Plan, there is no requirement in Odenton for structured parking. So we're basically carrying through what we did in 2016 with this amendment.
Mr. Volkey.
Yep, thank you. Didn't the place that's across from parole, didn't OPZ want them, I think it was going to be a Wegmans, to build a parking garage? And they wouldn't build a parking garage, and then that was why the Wegmans didn't go in, and that's why it's the apartments now? I'm just trying to understand how OPZ's policy on that one was, hey, you have to do structured parking, but now we're in the Odenton Town Center, and we're saying, no, we're not going to do that. And it's your district, by the way, Ms. Hummer, so I'm going to support it. I'm just asking the question.
Sure.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, Mr. Volkey, I'm in the planning division, and I do interact sometimes with the development division, but not that frequently. And I really do not know all of the details of what happened with that project, and so I don't want to make something up.
That's fair. Mr. Hunt is well-versed in that, how to move through that. Well done, well done. I just read an article about a lawyer who was coaching a client through a deposition, and they got in trouble. But thankfully, this is not a deposition. So anyway, all right, appreciate that.
Mr. Smith.
Yep, like, I think this, if this, had this not been in Odenton Town Center, it probably would be a no for this amendment. It is her district, and I am all about, if you have a vision for your district as a council member, you should certainly be able to move on that. And so while I'm not necessarily a fan of this particular one, I'll support it. But it is interesting that we want to take that out. But it's your show.
Ms. Hummer.
As you said, we did have extensive conversation on this. And based on the previous plan, so Odenton has gone through many iterations over the years, and it's not been required before. And we, there was, since the 2016 plan, there has been a large multifamily area that has been built, it's over 200 units, which does not have structured parking. And it has worked, and it's worked well with the parking, with the surface, with, while still having open space and things. And so looking at that and seeing how that fits in there, we felt that this was something that could work. We did discuss extensively, looking at parole. Parole is a more urban, built-up area than it has, and so there might be more need for that around the shopping. But looking at the Odenton footprint, there wasn't as much. This still leaves the option that they can do the parking garage. Also, remember, too, with the Odenton Town Center, a lot, while it's a large area, a large portion of it is centered around the Mark Station, which is getting a very large parking garage that is going to be built. So there will be a lot of possibilities in the walking distance for other additional parking as well. So that came into play as well, as we talked about this.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I actually just want to...
I actually just, um, want to sort of advocate for this amendment, too. I mean, I absolutely take the point that by not requiring structured parking, that you are indeed creating, um, you know, greater surface area of, um, imperv, uh, greater impervious surface area, but at the same time, um, structured parking is, uh, can be prohibitively expensive, and if we're having conversations about the need for housing, and I think Odenton and the, around the town center, around the Mark Station is a very, very wise place to be looking at increasing housing and higher-density housing. And while it's not the same as impervious surface, parking, um, flat parking lots can be built with very reasonable stormwater management, uh, features. So I think that, I think this is a reasonable, and a reasonable requirement, and I will also note that in the end, um, the, the parcel that Mr. Volkey was talking about does indeed, it is, you probably have noticed, there is indeed structured parking in that space, but it is different. I mean, parole town center is, you know, um, is at the heart of Annapolis, and Annapolis, at least right now, the heart of Annapolis is still bigger than Odenton, not that this is a competition, but Odenton is catching up and maybe taking, going to take over.
Ms. Fiedler.
I'm going to support this amendment. I appreciate the explanation. If this was a prohibition on structured parking, I would be voting a different way, but I appreciate this.
No, it simply gives the flexibility, and then, and this way, too, as development, if they're working through the projects, they can determine what works best for them to be able to do, to have the flexibility about what works for the site and the plan for the site.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number five.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number five has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number six.
Amendment number six. This amendment requires that bicycle parking for multifamily dwellings be covered or protected from weather.
Ms. Hammer, this is your amendment?
Yes, the, the original plan says that, um, bicycle parking will be covered or protected at all, um, properties, and we've decided to make it more flexible and require for multifamily, where people will be storing their bikes, but not necessarily that it's a requirement for commercial buildings to offer protected bike parking. So, um, I ask your support, and I move the motion.
Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
The administration?
We support as well.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number six has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven. This amendment changes the maximum letter size for an awning or canopy sign in the OTC C zoning district to twelve inches.
Ms. Hammer, this is your amendment?
I think this one is self-explanatory. It just changes the letter size for signs, so I ask everyone's support and move the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does the administration have anything to say?
We're fine with this amendment as well.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say, I'm looking forward to seeing what Hummer Town looks like in the next fifteen years, and just like I'm going to build a Rodvian, uh, accessory dwelling unit in my backyard at some point, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion at this time, Madam Secretary, please read, please call the roll on amendment number seven.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number seven has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight.
Amendment number eight. This amendment removes a restriction on hanging or blade signs that are located within twenty-five feet of other hanging or blade signs or projecting signs.
Ms. Hammer, this is your last amendment of the night?
Yes, this is very specific about hanging signs at things. Again, it's offering more flexibility for buildings, and yes, I learned more about signage and hanging signs going through this than I had previously known, but this is just offering more flexibility, and I just want to thank all my colleagues for your support on all of these amendments, and please support this one as well, and move the motion.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
Is there any further discussion? The administration?
We would urge the council to adopt this amendment as well.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eight.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Even though I think twenty-five feet might be a little close, I'm going to go for it and vote aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number eight has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill number eighty-four dash twenty-three will be heard, as, well, as amended, will be heard on January second, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eighty-six dash twenty-three.
Bill number eighty-six twenty-three. An ordinance concerning subdivision and development zoning, development requirements for particular types of development redevelopment.
This is a county executive, uh, bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Janson Evelyn, our deputy chief administrative officer for land use, Eric Michelson, our director of environmental policy, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill was discussed at a prior work session, as well as a prior council hearing. Just broad overview, it establishes redevelopment requirements that are applicable to the critical economic, critical corridor, town center, and transit-oriented development, uh, transit-oriented overlay policy areas in Plan 2040. I know there are several amendments to discuss, so I will withhold further comment at this point, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion with my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing on bill number eighty-six dash twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony from the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, we received two submissions. Everyone here got that in an email. There is a summary posted on our website, and everything will be added to the record.
We do have, uh, a couple individuals that have signed up for testimony. Dr. Bonner, Mr. Johnston, you may come forward at this time. Take a seat, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes.
Thank you. Linda Hanifin Bonner, 2648 Quiet Water Cove, Annapolis, Maryland. Thank you. I represent the Anarundel Connecting Together, a nonprofit organization representing over twenty, twenty-eight congregations and groups within Anarundel County fighting for causes of the community. We welcome the opportunity to, uh, make additional comments on bill eighty-six twenty-three. We have submitted, uh, more testimony in greater detail, so I'm just going to quickly summarize the key points. We believe this bill can go one step further and state that all housing units within a redevelopment site are designated as affordable, either through sale or rental, and that the tenant must be on the ACDS eligibility list. Additionally, we think these units should not be eligible or made available at market rate until this demand no longer exists. We also believe that there needs to be an integration of all the housing policies with the zoning, and we would encourage you to begin looking at seeing how this cohesiveness can begin. I've picked up, uh, a number of conflicting zoning applications between, uh, these two bills and the workforce housing bill, and of course, the MPDU bill is now a moot point. One particular, uh, item of interest is the community notification process in this proposed legislation. We recommend that this procedure be changed and that the community be given an opportunity to provide comment at the concept plan stage, not after the developer has applied for the, for the process. This addresses two impediments. One, it enables the surrounding community to have legitimate input, and then it also saves the developers additional funding.
Thank you, Dr. Bonner. Mr. Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. I was here a couple weeks ago, oh, sorry, Matt Johnston, uh, representing Arundel Rivers Federation, uh, who fights for clean water in the southwest and road river watersheds and across Anarundel County, headquartered at PO Box 760 Edgewater, Maryland. I was here a couple weeks ago, um, to say that redevelopment is one of the best land use policies for our rivers and our environment, and that is because, for the most part, whenever you redevelop, you build up and not out. You don't sprawl, and you replace impervious surfaces, parking lots with parking lots, council member Rodvian, or parking garages, um, either one are fine, as long as you replace the impervious surface with impervious surface. My concern that I expressed back then, I'll express again this evening, and that is that R twenty-two, the bulk requirements, uh, they, they, they stop the impervious surface coverage at forty-five percent. This bill says you can do R twenty-two in C one, C two, C three. Those bulk requirements stop impervious coverage at eight, seventy-five percent and eighty percent, respectively. So my concern is that there's an inadvertent expansion of impervious surface, which is not, I don't think, the kind of redevelopment that the administration, nor advocates at the table, nor this council want to see. I think we all want to see the greener redevelopment and not the grayer redevelopment. So I'd encourage you to do everything that you can, uh, to take, take a look at the bill and try to eliminate the expansion of impervious surfaces, inadvertent as it may be. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, for those folks who signed up ahead of time, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to testify at this time on bill eighty-six dash twenty-three? Please come forward. Ms. Fox, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Kate Fox, uh, chair of the Legislative Committee of Growth Action Network. There's a lot to like about this bill. First, as Matt Johnston just testified, water quality of site runoff improves with redevelopment. In addition, green fields are not paved over, and blighted properties or areas are revitalized and refreshed. In addition, we expect economic conditions are improved in areas when redevelopment has occurred. Dan also understands the need to streamline the redevelopment planning process, but we would like to see more options for community input into this pro, planning and any modifications a developer asks for. For that reason, we are asking that the community meeting be held before the concept plan is submitted to OPZ, which I understand there's an amendment to do that tonight, but that submittal should include the transcript of the meeting and any audio or video from the meeting. We also want the site posted, in addition to written notification provided to property owners and local associations. Same for modifications. The site should be posted and a community meeting held. There should be tra, a traffic study completed if the site has been vacant for more than two years. Traffic patterns change over time and adjust to the reduction in traffic from the property being vacant. It's not enough to estimate whether the redevelopment will generate more or less than two-hundred-and-fifty new daily trips to pass the adequate public facilities test for roads. Finally, we are concerned about the amendment that allows no commercial, that allows no commercial element in a redevelopment on commercially zoned property. This makes no sense. If we want to get people out of their cars and make communities walkable and transit-friendly, there needs to be mixed use in the redevelopment. We suggest using the criteria for mixed-use residential zoning. Businesses like childcare, dry cleaners, small restaurants, or small convenience or grocery stores could be some options for commercial entities in such redeveloped property. We hope to see amendments for these changes in the upcoming meetings as this bill evolves. Um, thank you, and also I wish you all a very wonderful holiday, however you celebrate, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Sir?
Ma'am, thank you. David Doll, 313, uh, Georgia Avenue, Glenn Burney. So it's interesting, like vaping has done far more to decrease smoking here in America than like the twenty or so odd years of like government propaganda saying like, don't smoke, so of course, the first thing that the government does is regulate vaping and tell you, you know, don't do that either. Kind of feel like redevelopment's the same thing, right? Like, we want to encourage people to redevelop the, the land that's already developed because we don't want them to build new stuff somewhere else and destroy the wildlife. So to incentivize that the most, we should deregulate as much as possible so that people are incentivized to rebuild on the current land instead of elsewhere. So I would encourage you, at all possible times, burn the zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on bill eighty-six dash twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eighty-six dash twenty-three.
Bill number eighty-six twenty-three. An ordinance concerning subdivision and development zoning, development requirements for particular types of development redevelopment.
I'm prepared to move to amendments if there are no comments from my colleagues at this time. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number three.
Amendment number three. Mine is missing the description. Can't get a full copy. Hang on one sec. Amendment number three. This amendment adds townhouse dwellings as a conditional use in C two and C four districts only in a redevelopment project in certain policy areas, and increases maximum density for townhouse dwellings in redevelopment projects in all commercial districts in certain policy areas to twenty-two units per acre.
This is a county executive amendment? Did you want to speak to it briefly?
Yes, how you doing? Good evening, everyone. Janson Evelyn, on behalf of the administration. This was an amendment that after, um, the previous work session, uh, we went back to the drawing board, we had some internal discussions, and we opted, um, to include townhomes because we wanted to add and include different, or create a diversity of, um, housing stock. So that's essentially all this bill, or this amendment is.
Can I get a motion to adopt amendment number three? Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
Is there any discussion on amendment number three at this time? I have a question. I'm in favor of this amendment, um, as you might already know, but, uh, I, I did want to pose the question of, um, so now we can redevelop with multifamily and now townhomes. Was there any further discussion about, uh, additional, uh, dwelling types? You know, there certainly are commercial corridors that, um, are, this bill is applicable to, um, certainly line, you know, our, our thin commercial corridors with, with single-family homes, tech, some right behind our commercial. So if we're talking about redevelopment, it seems like it would be advantageous to allow a tapering down into a transitional area, and so maybe a semi-detached or duplex product might allow for further flexibility, um, on a redevelopment site. I'm just curious if y'all, you landed on townhomes, just curious if you thought beyond, uh, townhomes and getting into other dwelling types, or maybe there are challenges I'm not aware of.
I mean, ideologically, I like the concept of the transition, particularly where you have, um, detached, uh, a single-family detached, and you want to create that level of community where you have the different, um, diversity and variety of housing stocks so that you can ultimately create community. I think ultimately, the industry will, the building industry will ultimately have to, I think, weigh in on that particular one, um, and I say that because when you're, when you're building the multifamily, specifically apartments and/or even townhomes, we've talked... Oh, yeah, when we're building, uh, multifamily town and townhomes, I'm sorry, I, sometimes it's hard for me to focus, but not, you're fine. I think you can, you can always pencil, you can try to pencil those out to make the numbers work. I think when you start looking at some of those different types of housing stock, that it becomes a little bit harder. However, the administration is willing to continue, um, to engage around this particular issue, um, especially if members of the council, um... especially if members of the council envision producing an amendment. I'm not sure that the administration is necessarily going to go any further. I think internally, our discussions around townhomes, to include townhomes, we thought it made sense and it fit ultimately for the purpose of the bill. I do think, again, speaking for myself personally, I like ideologically the concept of creating those communities. But we would be willing to weigh in on any amendment that members of the council decide to put forth.
Thank you. Is there any further comment on Amendment number three? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number three.
Ms. Hummer. Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number three has been adopted.
Madam Secretary... Oh. I'm getting myself lost here. Please read Amendment number four.
Amendment number four. This amendment provides that the community meeting will occur prior to the initial submission of a concept plan.
This is also a county executive amendment. Did you want to speak to it briefly?
Yes, very briefly. As we've just heard testimony from certain organizations, GAN and ACT, this was something that we, upon further discussion with them following the work session, we decided to make that change. We felt that it made it more streamlined and more efficient ultimately.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt Amendment number four? Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
Do we have any discussion on Amendment number four? I appreciate this amendment very much. It makes this bill a little more similar to the Glen Burnie Sustainable Overlay, which is working really well with community input in the early stage of a development and allowing for the community's input to be more impactful. So I'm a yes on this. Do we have any further comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number four.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment number four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number five.
Amendment number five. This amendment clarifies that a redevelopment application for subdivision or site development may proceed directly to a final plan or site development plan after submission of a concept plan.
Thank you. This is also a county executive amendment?
Yes. This was simply clarification language. I think this is very simple, so I'm not going to opine any further. But we're willing to field any questions, if there are any.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment number five?
Rodvian, so moved.
Is there a second?
Hummer, second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment number five? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number five.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number five has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number six.
Amendment number six. This amendment allows information regarding trip generation from a prior use to be considered when determining adequacy of road facilities for a redevelopment project.
This is a county executive amendment?
I assume my voice carried, but yes, it is an administration amendment. Originally, when we drafted and filed this proposed legislation, we were going to put out a couple of policy directives to give clarity to both the community as well as the building industry. But again, following the work session, following discussions, we realized that it ultimately made a bit more sense to just have this language included within the legislation to provide that full clarity and transparency because we all know that sometimes an internal policy or even a published promulgated policy, sometimes it may change from, you know, department head to department head. So that's why we opted to put this language within the bill. Ultimately, as the amendment notes, this allows prior trip generation from areas that already have had development to have that... To have that prior traffic usage be utilized when creating and when looking into a traffic impact study.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment number six?
Or so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Quick question. So, and I get with this. I'm not necessarily as opposed to it. If you have a study that occurred, the development happens, because this is redevelopment, and they want to use the prior trips, what hap... Is there any input or process that allows for things outside of that development? For me, for... Like, if there's another BRAC. So take Severn right outside of Fort Meade, and they want to redevelopment, redevelop one of the neighborhoods over there. Use the prior trips, got it. But if there is a large... Another BRAC round of voting at the federal level, and you move 20,000 jobs or whatever the number over there, that will certainly impact the roadways in and around that community's... How does that be... How is that factored in?
In terms of this particular amendment, it's not factored in. But the reality is, any development site, obviously they're not as impactful or as large as a BRAC. But anytime you have new development or an expansion of development, in this case redevelopment, you obviously have other prior developments that have had... That actually have an impact. But when we're... The basic industry standard is to utilize a traffic impact study to look at prior use and then to determine if the future usage of that roadway, of those intersections, if they're going to be dramatically altered by the new or the proposed development. In this case, again, the redevelopment. So while we can speculate as to, you know, with respects to BRACs, I think this amendment allows, and it also gives a certain level of clarity as well as fairness to the developer or the builder. In this case, it's going to be tremendous fiscal, financial impact. And so if they're going to have to be paying for all of the prior usage that that developed site has already incurred, I think it leads to an absurd conclusion, which is why we have even gone back a bit further to... Usually you just look three years back, but in this case, we've gone... We're going to be looking further back to allow that area, that site, where you've already had traffic impact, where you've already had usage from that prior development to be factored into any future traffic input, impact. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just wanted to make sure that other factors outside of the developed site and the requirements to do traffic studies for that developed site, that the process accounts for or looks at at some point other mitigating circumstances outside of that development site that still may add traffic or to that area that may not be captured because we're saying, we'll use the one, you know, within 10 years or whatever the number is. That's all I was trying to sort of raise that point. I do want to make it... I live in an area that's all pretty much developed. So I certainly want to make it easier to redevelop some of those areas. But I was curious about that if someone in... I was going to say DPW, in Planning and Zoning or IMP or whoever is factoring in other things outside of just that particular development. That's all.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The concern I have with the MPDU bill was that it wasn't looking out for the community, right? It was going to add costs to everybody else for certain people to benefit. The concern I have with this bill is that it's not looking out for the community, that it's going to add costs and burdens to the community for the benefit of developers, which is what this is trying to incentivize. The concern that I have with this traffic component of this is the same thing that Mr. Smith was kind of identifying and talking about, which is you're sort of spotting the developer, whatever the traffic study was from however many years ago. And you're saying, "Well, we're going to give you that baseline," right? Even if this has been a vacant property. So we're not necessarily going to factor in all the other things that have grown up and developed around it unless the number of traffic trips that you generate from your property exceeds what was on that property before when it was built. But if the rest of the community has already kind of grown up and people are used to certain traffic patterns, how are you accounting for that with this? And I just don't see how you're doing it with this traffic number that you're doing in this bill. I think Ms. Fox from GAN made this point about needing more with the traffic sort of factors in this bill and what you're looking at. And so I guess the problem I have with this is the same problem I have with the initial bill, the same problem I have with this. It seems like it continues to make it easier and easier for the developer at the detriment of the people who are sitting in traffic, which is the community members. So I'm not quite sure how the administration is looking out for the community with this. But if you have something that you can give me that suggests I'm incorrect, I welcome hearing that. But that's the way that I see it. And so I would love to hear any feedback you have on this.
So ultimately, again, I think that this amendment and the way that we look at a traffic impact study, it factors in, yes, prior usage, future usage. But it also looks at all of the impacts that that traffic from other developments will ultimately feed into. I do think that your concerns are definitely well noted. I will... I don't want to just spitball right now. I want to actually go and follow up and then respond fully to your specific question. So I will definitely shoot you an email. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I just want to clarify and make sure I really understand this because this is a complicated amendment, in my humble opinion. But presumably, if you're in a situation like Councilman Volkey mentioned, where you have a property that's redeveloped or that you're looking to redevelop, and you have neighboring properties that have sort of grown up, the neighborhood has grown up a little bit or become a little bit more developed over time, each one of those properties, at the point of its development, would also have a traffic impact study. So those properties, in the course of their development, would have to, you know, meet the adequate public facilities test for traffic. So even though that original property is not in the same condition or it doesn't have the same surrounding conditions, all of the surrounding properties would have had to account for the traffic, the collective traffic. So whichever one was sort of the latest and greatest would have, you know, sort of addressed that already. And if the property was vacant, it doesn't quite get the same treatment. If the property was vacant, it only gets, like, the baseline traffic. So it still has to... That property, the property that you're redeveloping, if it's vacant at the time of redevelopment, still only gets the... It only gets sort of credit for the baseline. And it doesn't automatically... It's not like you're free. The developers will still have to, you know, sort of justify and explain either why they're... Why the traffic conditions, you know, the adequacy of the, you know... The adequacy of the traffic conditions will be met with the redeveloped property, or they're going to have to mitigate in some way. And that's left to the discretion of Planning and Zoning Officer. Am I getting that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So there's actually a lot of safeguards in here to make sure that, you know, a redeveloped property is not just going to sort of overrun everything because even if there's been changes around, each one of those changes has to go through the adequate public facilities test for roads also. Am I...
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
So I don't think this is as much of a, quote, like, giveaway to developers. I think it actually is a very reasonable way of, like, you know, putting resources to good use and not sort of redoing... Sort of, you know, having someone redo something that has already been done in the sequence of, you know, development in an area.
Mr. Michelson, did you have something to add?
Yeah. Eric Michelson, environmental policy officer. I think, you know, to Councilman Volkey's point, essentially, it's a grandfathering provision. So the, you know, the original developers of the property, and it goes back 10 years, would have had to make some kind of accommodations or mitigation, assuming their traffic impacts rose to a certain level where there was going to be those accommodations. And those are simply being transferred to the new developer of the site. And I think, I mean, it's certainly a valid point. I think one of the things to consider throughout almost all of these elements is, again, an ability of a new property owner to have some level of certainty in terms of what can be done with that property without having to go through perhaps a more Byzantine process to establish, you know, basically that they're back to the baseline in terms of traffic or these other kinds of features. So I think Councilwoman Rodvian's points stand as well and that, you know, this feature allows sort of a vested interest to be retained. And then if they're going to exceed that, they are going to have to do the new traffic study and provide mitigation for those additional trips. Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. So you had mentioned that standard industry practice is that it's within three years. This is 10, so we're more than doubling it. Can you speak to the rationalization justification for more than doubling the standard industry practice?
As Eric just noted, again, when you... And the phrase he used was actually pretty on point, vested interest. You've had traffic studies, you've had development, you've had all types of impact that's already been made. You've gone through traffic APF testing. And in this case, where you've... So by being able to go back a little bit beyond the three-year period, you're able to not have to be... Not ultimately cause or create a roadblock to this redevelopment. Again, when you look at what the ultimate policy consideration for this redevelopment is, it's to get an area that's already gone through all types of development. You have the impervious surface. And what we ultimately want is to create something new, something better. And so by being able to... And when you look ultimately at redevelopment, there's so many impediments to... There's so many impediments to repurposing a place that's already had... I'm sorry. Forgive me for a second, I'm having a blank. So I've been off for a bit, so I'm now jumping back into this. So I apologize for a little lag. But no, ultimately, when you're looking at these redevelopments and... Yeah, I'm having a blank. I apologize. I'm having... I will follow up. I will listen to the recording and I will follow up and answer your question.
I appreciate it. And I more than understand. We've all been there. So I think to speak to my concern with this is that... And I respect what Ms. Rodvian was explaining about and Mr. Michelson's point about there's a process that the surrounding properties are going through. I understand it philosophically, I understand it rationally. What I am hearing, that the parts of our county that this bill is targeting are parts where... What I hear from residents is that the traffic is not working already. So whatever it is we have been doing isn't already working. And now we're going to double down on what is not working by not looking, you know, giving a, basically, an exemption. And that is where I get stuck. If I could look at these areas, again, I'll speak to my own district. It's what I know best, Route 3, Route 2, and Edgewater. If I could... best, Route 3, Route 2, and Edgewater, if I could, if I was hearing from residents that traffic was flowing and they weren't getting stuck and it wasn't a problem, this would be a lot easier to wrap my arms around and say, oh, all right, I'll take a chance because I understand the greater good that you're going for. But that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing from people is that they're incredibly frustrated by the current traffic conditions, and we're going to then essentially, it feels like doubling down on a bad situation. And that's where I'm, I'm getting lost on this amendment, so just wanted to be able to explain where I was for your benefit.
Thank you, Ms. Ledbetter. I would like the administration to, this is not an exemption from mitigation, from traffic mitigation, from a higher or more intense use. Is that correct?
Correct. I would just follow up with that and say, this is December 2023. Three years ago is December 2020, there weren't a lot of cars on the road because no one was shopping and no one was coming to work. So we need to go back further than three years when we're looking at traffic in this particular instance, because if we just look back three years based on what was the traffic at the time, it doesn't fully capture the situation that there is now. And so having a further look back that's more comprehensive, I think, actually gives us a better picture. That's all.
May I follow up for clarification?
Sure.
If I'm reading this correct, this is not saying that a traffic study has to look back further. What it's saying is that a traffic study as old as 10 years ago can be used. I just want to make sure I'm...
It, it can, it doesn't have to be, but it gives, it gives a property or an applicant the option to look back 10 years, because if they only went back three years, they might not be capturing the full picture.
I, I guess what I'm, but I want to make sure, I apologize. My question was, this isn't, this is an exemption from having to do the traffic study. It's not dictating how many years a traffic study has to look back.
Ms. Ledbetter, no, this is not saying that you can use a 10-year-old traffic study. You would still have to do a current traffic study. It's saying that you can use the baseline traffic value from the, a use 10 years ago as the basis for your traffic study.
10 years. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
I'm good.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I guess this is really just a clarification. If a property was developed, you know, say 10 years ago, and it had been in use, and we're not talking about the situation where it had become vacant at some point, because there, all of a sudden, the scrutiny becomes much higher, do we see significant variation in the traffic pattern from a single property that is in, you know, use in generally consistent ways over a 10-year period? I mean, I think of, you know, for example, I'm, I'm just thinking Riva Festival. I don't know why that's the one that came to mind, probably because I was there earlier today. The traffic pattern, I mean, Riva Festival has been there much longer than 10 years. The traffic pattern, because that hasn't really changed, maybe there's a handful of storefronts here and there that have changed, the traffic pattern of Riva Festival has not changed significantly. And so you'd probably make that same kind of assumption about any property that was in use in generally the same sort of way. Is that, I mean, is that a fair, I'm not a traffic expert, so I'm wondering, is that like kind of the assumption that we're making about, you know, how traffic patterns stay the same or don't stay the same?
Lynn Miller, I, I think that's, that's a reasonable assumption, yes.
But if we go back to Riva Festival and all of a sudden, you know, half of the tenants were, you know, empty, vacant, we would be talking about a very different scenario and a different kind of examination by planning and zoning would apply.
Right, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I think with what you've said, I feel comfortable supporting this amendment.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number 6? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 6.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 6 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 7.
Amendment Number 7. This amendment alters the definition of redevelopment to exclude improvements to a structure or new construction on a lot if the improvements or construction would result in an increase in the existing impervious area of the site.
Ms. Radvian, this is your amendment.
Thank you. So I think this really is asking us to hone in on what kind of properties we really want to redevelop, or what, we, we want to sort of give the advantages of a redevelopment bill. And this amendment says, look, you, you still get, if you have a property, you still get the regular development process, but if you're going to change the amount of impervious surface on that property, you're going to have to use the regular development process and not the redevelopment process that gives you some, some advantages. So that's really, you know, this is really just looking at how, how broad do we want to, do we want to, I mean, how, do we want to say, for example, we have a, a property that, say, only is, has a, a small part of, of that property that's developed and has impervious surface? Do we then want to go say, well, we're going to give you all the advantages of this redevelopment process, which has some, you know, has some shortcuts, even though you're going to significantly change the amount of impervious surface on the site? And this says, hey, let's, let's keep it within the boundaries of what, you know, of what is truly redevelopment, and, and not sort of a partial redevelopment, but also some green space development. I move Amendment Number 7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the administration like to respond?
Yes. Eric Michelson, Environmental Policy Officer. I think, you know, the administration opposes this amendment for the reason, sort of the reason that was discussed with regards to some of the Odenton Town Center amendments. Essentially, we believe that the, that the existing protections in the bill in terms of redevelopment needing to be at least 40% or more of the, the existing impervious on the site, and then the site being defined down to essentially those, that part of the, the property that is not these environmental features that are otherwise protected, we believe that the sort of net benefit of allowing redevelopment more broadly in terms of stormwater management requirements and the other kinds of benefits that accrue outweighs putting these additional restrictions in terms of additional impervious, like restricting additional impervious surface completely. So that's not to say that the new impervious surface will not have to be mitigated in terms of stormwater, that it will be subject to, to those regulations that exist for redevelopment activities, but I think the, the sentiment is that this amendment is a bit overly restrictive in terms of what we'd like to see be able to happen at these sites.
Ms. Radvian.
Oh, I, I think I, I made my case that, you know, if, if we're talking about redevelopment, we really should be redeveloping, and even though, you know, we may, we may have partial redevelopment, the reality is that if we're adding impervious surface, we're, we're not redeveloping, we're developing green space, even if it is immediately adjacent to impervious surface. So I think, I, I think that's just some, a different, a different opinion of who should get the advantages of this redevelopment law.
So I, I can't support this amendment, but it, it really does, when we redevelop blighted or underutilized parcels, whether we're expanding two feet or 50 feet of impervious surface, the, the fact that natural resources are already cut out of the project, and, and we're adding modern innovative stormwater, so properties that have been developed and possibly even have been polluting for the last 40 or 50 years are going to get cleaned up and improved beyond anything we could imagine if they weren't. And I think if this amendment passes, this really does hinder what we're trying to accomplish in some of our oldest commercial corridors. And I have to remind everyone that this bill is only applicable in those very thin purple strips in the county, and I know many of them flow through my communities in District 2, and I think this would be a, a real detriment to the goals of this bill and the, the general development plan 2040. So I'm, I'm a no. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think for me, a couple of weeks ago, there was a, an individual that spoke about, is he still here? No, I think he left. Actually, I think it was you. Is that Matt?
Matt.
Matt. It was you, and I think what you were in, speaking in reference to was just us being cautious of, I don't, I don't know if this was the direction you were aimed at, but you certainly wanted us to be aware of, of how the impacts to the environment or impervious surface is, is impacted by, by development. It's, so I'm sensitive to that, to that, and I think there might be a way to, to address those concerns or ensure in the new redevelopment bill that if it expands, the, maybe the, the, the ability to enhance stormwater remediation or, or impervious surfaces is also included in that, but not necessarily restricting it to, like, when I read this amendment, I see if, if I had a 10 by 10, the only thing I could build there is another 10 by 10. That's the way I read this. I don't know if that's the intent of the sponsor, but I'm not sure that I am 100% there on that, that interpretation. I just want to make sure that whatever impact is done, that we do a equal and opposite impact to the remediation of any environmental features that we, that we attach to it. So, so I think I'm a no on this, on this amendment, but, but I totally understand what the, the sponsor is trying to, to do with it.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes, I totally understand the intent, and I agree that we like to limit impervious surfaces as much as possible, but I think that this could have a very limiting factor on some of our blighted areas. I think in particular of an area mine, that it's not going to fall under the redevelopment bill because it's already in place, but if this had been in place, it would not qualify. It's an old airport, so it has a, it has a runway on it, and, and then around it is other area. Well, to build the housing that's going to be there, they are going to increase the impervious surface, but the impervious surface that's there right now is flat, no stormwater, there's nothing there that's mitigating it. The new thing that will come in will have stormwater features, it will have, instead of scrub that's there, that it will have some really planned, beautiful green space and public activity space, and if it was limited to the 40%, they would not be able to do that there because of that. Whereas anything that will be built there is going to be much more environmentally friendly than what is currently there, which is old runway with chemicals and things running straight off of it. So I just don't want us to limit. I totally agree that we want to, where possible, you know, limit our impervious surface, but I think the benefits of modern stormwater management on so many of these, what we're really talking about is, in many cases, very blighted areas that are currently just environmental hazards, and anything we do to them is going to be a vast improvement to it is, and I would hate to have that kind of arbitrary limit of 40, of just replacing rights there because I think it limits the good things we could be doing for the environment and for our economy and for our housing situations.
Chair.
Mr. Volkey. Oh, excuse me.
You can, the admin can respond. I just wanted to speak to, to this amendment, and there's actually a follow-up amendment, and it really speaks to the traffic amendment, too. I think, you know, all of these concerns are obviously coming from a, a good place and a place that is worried about either the environment or the, the community and those sorts of things. I think it's important, though, to look back and say, how has this county treated redevelopment in the past? And it's been really unsuccessful at getting redevelopment to occur within the county. And so the kinds of things that we're worried about here in terms of, I think, the environmental impacts or the traffic impacts are, would be the product of a bill that is remarkably successful at spurring redevelopment. You know, we should be so fortunate to have this kind of activity occur. And then there's certainly a point, I think, in the future, if we find that the, the redevelopment's occurring like gangbusters, and there are shortcomings in terms of how some of these elements are treated, it could be revisited or revised. But I think right now, from, from my perspective at least, it's, you know, trying to figure out, how do we get, how do we, how do we prime the pump so that we can actually get this redevelopment to occur, and then worry about mitigating some of those impacts perhaps at some point in the future, as opposed to trying to snuff it out before essentially it becomes an issue. So, you know, I could understand, maybe philosophically, there are differences of opinion as to whether we want that additional housing, but given the tenor of the conversations in the, the chambers this evening, it seems like there's a pretty broad consensus for trying to add more housing stock. And I think that some of these concerns, while completely legitimate, we just need to temper with sort of the broader goal of the bill. So, thank you.
Mr. Volkey. Oh. I, I appreciate, I appreciate everyone's comments very much. It's a, as someone who worked really hard on the revitalization bill that's in the map area of the Sustainable Community of Glen Burnie, we, we thought we set that table really well. And this is actually, some of these issues didn't come up during that bill, but we haven't seen a lot of redevelopment projects quite yet after three-plus years of that bill being in place. So I want to remind my colleagues that redevelopment is hard, redevelopment is expensive, and there's a lot of unpredictability when tackling a redevelopment project because you don't know what you're going to uncover when you, when you start picking away at a, an old asphalt parking lot. You don't really know what else is going on, on that parcel. So I hope we can avoid this amendment at this time, that would be my plug, to not hamstring a project with the creativity and the flexibility when we know the goal is to improve underutilized parcels for the benefit of all of our older commercial corridors in the county. If there are no other comments, seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 7.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 7 has been adopted.
Gentlemen. Amendment Number 8. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 8.
Amendment Number 8. This amendment requires a redevelopment site that contains natural features and associated buffers with impervious area to remove the impervious area to the maximum extent practicable during the development.
Ms. Radvian, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you. So hopefully, my colleagues that maybe didn't like Amendment Number 7 might be able to get behind Amendment Number 8, which I think we've talked about, one of the advantages of redevelopment is that we have the opportunity to go back and improve the environmental conditions on the site. And this just makes one very specific ask with, with some understanding that, you know, we can't necessarily do everything, but it requires that, a redevelopment site that has, you know, some sort of natural features or buffers that have impervious surface to remove that impervious surface to the maximum extent practicable. So basically, to say, look, we have environmental features that we have paved over, and we want to retrieve those environmental features to the maximum extent practicable. And I think that leaves a lot of leeway for planning and zoning to say, okay, what is the maximum extent practicable? Have we, have we covered up a, a stream with a parking lot and just put some sort of culvert under it? And, you know, what is that, how practicable is it? Can we, can we take out that part of impervious surface and allow that stream some space to flow in a reasonable manner? Or, and, and that leaves sort of the leeway up to planning and zoning, but says, hey, this is a goal we'd like to achieve. So I move Amendment Number 8.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the administration like to comment on this amendment?
We oppose the amendment for the same reason listed in the prior amendment. Essentially, this constricts the ability of the developers to, to maximize the opportunities on the site.
Thank you. Are there any comments on this amendment? I have a question. Seeing that the previous amendment passed, I, I want to clarify for my own community that the Glen Burnie Sustainable Area Overlay can be utilized and supersede this countywide bill. So in, in the Sustainable Community, people, developers can choose to use the policy that I crafted three years ago.
That's correct.
All right. So my community will not, everybody come to Glen Burnie. Let's, let's, let's revitalize Glen Burnie. Any other... Any other comments on Amendment Number Eight? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Eight has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Nine.
Amendment Number Nine. This amendment requires that an application for redevelopment acknowledge any feedback provided by the county at the pre-application meeting.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is my amendment, and in going through the applicability section of the bill, I discovered that there was just some language that I felt was a little restrictive in regards to pre-submission meetings between the community, the developer, the investor, and the Office of Planning and Zoning was looking to strike the more mandatory language of be in accordance with and exchange it with acknowledge. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Does the administration have any comments about Amendment Number Nine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you sharing this amendment with us ahead of time. I guess our only comments would be that I think OPZ is a little concerned about how they would interpret this when they're going through the planning process. It's a little unclear to them, and that it might cause some challenges for developers as they get further along in the process. All that being said, I think community input should be taken into account.
So, thank you for that feedback. It was not provided to me when we discussed it collectively and agreed on this language. I haven't found this kind of language in any other part of the code as regard to applicability with pre-submission comments. It's my understanding that it tends to be more of a back-and-forth and a give-and-take, and this language that is drafted currently in the bill, it, it makes it sound like coming out of a pre-submission meeting, the application must do exactly how planners, staff planners said they should, when there could be three or four different ways to solve a problem. So I was looking to soften that language a little bit.
I understand. I don't know if Lynn wants to respond to that, about how that, that process works with the, the back-and-forth in the conversation.
Sure. There is a lot of back-and-forth during the development review process. The dialogue is valuable. I think parties on both sides would probably agree with that. So the thing to keep in mind is, our staff can't mandate anything in a development application that's not in the code, but we can make suggestions. We often have, you know, very worthwhile comments and suggestions to make about a site development plan. And so I think the concern here is that, for one, to be in accordance still doesn't mean that we can mandate something that's not codified, but it does suggest that the applicant would need to take OPZ comments into consideration. Whereas, if you just say acknowledge, you know, I think, you know, in an applicant's next submittal, they could simply send in a resubmittal that says acknowledged, and that would be it. And, and I think our feeling is that they would feel less the need to take OPZ comments under consideration. And again, I think there's value all around in that back-and-forth dialogue.
Thank you. Maybe the Office of Law wants to weigh in on what it, what, how it would be interpreted must be in accordance with the feedback provided at the pre-application meeting. That's pretty strong language, in my opinion, if there's something that is, if a planning staff can't actually make decisions at this stage of the game. What, how would the Office of Law interpret that?
Lori Blair, Deputy County Attorney. So I think that, I think that what Ms. Miller's saying is correct, that acknowledgement is, okay, we heard you, but we're not going to act in any particular way. I think that there are going to be certain things that occur in a pre-application meeting that the developer is going to have to take into account, because they are, some of them are going to be mandated by the code. Their, their application may not comport with the code. I'm not sure if there's some middle ground there, but I think that acknowledgement alone is problematic in that respect.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
I got a comment, sorry. I was late, I couldn't get my button on. Mayor?
You may.
Thank you. I just want to touch on something that Madam Chair mentioned. I thought this had been agreed-upon language. Is this not agreed, I thought we came in here thinking the admin was on board with this language.
I was just raising that concern that OPZ had.
But did we know about that? I guess the concern, obviously, is all of us come in under the impression, hey, this has been discussed and hashed out.
Right.
The amendment is okay.
I, I, what I would say is that we can live with it.
Okay.
We just have that concern about how, how it would be interpreted.
Okay, so, so.
Like the rest of the code. Oh, excuse me.
We heard that, your mic's on. So, so just to be clear, this amendment, you feel like you can still work with the bill even if the amendment passed, or at least OPZ can work with it. Is that fair?
Yes, I think that's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Nine.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Nine has been adopted.
Thank you, everyone. Bill Number 8623 will be heard as amended on January 2, 2004. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 88-23, oh, I'm sorry, 87-23.
Bill Number 8723. An Ordinance Concerning Capital Budget and Program: Board of Education's Security-Related Upgrades, Roof Replacement, and Old Mill MS South Capital Projects: Community, College, Campus Improvements Capital Project, Supplementary and Transfer of Appropriations.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kyle Roof from Anarundel County Public Schools, Melissa Beardmore from Anarundel Community College, Naomi McAllister from the Budget Office, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill was discussed at a, at the work session. It amends the FY 2024 Capital Budget Program by making a supplementary appropriation of funds to the Board of Ed for security-related upgrades, roof replacement, capital projects, and to the Anarundel County Community College's campus improvement capital project for emergency replacement of a pedestrian bridge. It also requests a transfer of funding sources in the Board of Ed's Old Mill, Middle School South Capital Project, and will increase the Board of Education's level appropriation in two capital projects by a little over 3.2 million, and is the result of an increase in the state's grant funding being higher than what was estimated in the FY 2024 Capital Budget Program. We do have one technical amendment that we'll discuss at the appropriate time, and other than that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Bills 8723 at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 87-23. Madam Secretary, did we have any testimony on Bill 87-23?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
I don't believe we have anybody signed up. Is there anybody in the audience wanting to speak on Bill 87-23? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill 87-23 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 87-23.
Bill Number 8723. An Ordinance Concerning Capital Budget and Program: Board of Education's Security-Related Upgrades, Roof Replacement, and Old Mill MS South Capital Projects: Community, College, Campus Improvements Capital Project, Supplementary and Transfer of Appropriations.
This bill was discussed in-depth at the work session. Is there any discussion at this time? My colleagues, I, Madam Secretary, please read Technical Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects references to the names of funding sources and budgets.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
I better second.
Any questions about this technical amendment? Mr. Hunt, did you have anything to add about your technical amendment?
Just that I know my predecessor in this seat had a strong stance against typos, and I will be continuing that tradition.
Very well. Madam Secretary, please take the, gosh, it's late. Call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
That is six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Thank you. This bill can be voted on. That was just a technical amendment. Is there any other further discussion on Bill 87-23 at this time? How long should we wait for Mr. Volkey to take a vote? There you go. Madam, Madam Secretary, please read the title. Do we need to read the title again?
Don't have to, I can just call the roll.
We can call the roll, thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 87-23.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you to those at the table for waiting it out, and aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
In future, I'd love to see this bill moved to the front of the agenda. Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Noted, sir.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8723 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 88-23.
Bill Number 8823. An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Accessory Structures in Front Yards.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We discussed this bill at our work session. It came from a constituent in Severna Park who essentially lives in what you, you might know as a grid community, where there is a county road in what we all consider the front yard, and a county road abutting what we generally consider the backyard. And the owner wanted to put in a pergola, some hardscaping, and a hot tub, had to apply for a permit for the pergola, and in that process was denied because the code reads that the abutting rear is still considered the front yard, and you cannot have an accessory structure in a front yard. So this bill would allow for accessory structures in the yard that does not have the main access to the lot, thereby being the backyard, which is the front yard. Did I do a good job, Ms. Miller?
Is there any discussion at this time on Bill 8823? Mr. Hunt, you're good?
We're good.
Okay. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 8823. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
We will now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. I believe we have Mr. Richard Fredericks waiting in the audience to speak. Please come to the table, take a seat, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name, Richard Fredericks. I reside at 203 Severn River Road, Severna Park, Maryland 21146. I registered to testify this evening for two reasons. First, to request that you enact the contemplated ordinance for accessory structures in front yards for the reasons that you and county staff have already considered. And second, I commend the Office of Planning and Zoning for their adherence to the definition of words in the county code, and for their recognition that the code, on occasion, requires change. I believe Bill 8823 has a lot of merit, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on Bill 8823? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill 88-23 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8823.
Bill Number 8823. An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Accessory Structures in Front Yards.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey?
I have a question. For whoever, sponsor, planning and zoning. So when I grew up, my parents lived on the water, and the front of their house, which is the water side, is considered the front yard, and the other side is the backyard. So would this fix this, so that they could put an accessory structure in the other side? Because that's how it always was. It's like, you always knew the front of the house was technically considered the water side of it. Is that, is this in any way resolving that, or is that a totally separate issue?
I believe that is a separate issue.
Okay.
This is dealing with a lot that has roadway on what we consider the rear and the front.
Got you. So this is only a roadway issue? So if you were in a waterfront area, you're still going to be covered by front yard, backyard, all that?
I believe so, but I'll confirm with Ms. Miller.
Right, there's a separate section in Title II that deals specifically with waterfront lots, and this is not amending that.
Got it, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
I just want to thank Mr. Fredericks for staying here and hearing all of the legislation that came beforehand, and for recognizing that OPZ worked with me on this piece of legislation, and that this is exactly what local government is all about, identifying a challenge with the code, acknowledging together that it needs to be updated, and getting to this point. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Bill 88-23? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 88-23.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8823 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 89-23.
Bill Number 8923. An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes, Credits, Disabled or Fallen Law Enforcement Officers and Rescue Workers.
The lead sponsor on this bill is Ms. Ledbetter. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. We discussed this at the work session. I worked closely with a constituent resident of Anarundel County, who, he worked with our state legislature and, to develop and have unanimously passed the enabling legislation to make this possible. And I'm coming to our county to make our local Anarundel County Code fall in line with what our state legislature has supported on a bipartisan basis. What this bill will allow is for disabled law enforcement officers, federal, at the federal level, to receive property tax credit, or those, survivors of those who have fallen in the line of service. And I should mention that disabled is also disabled in the line of duty. I have two amendments, which I will elaborate on at the appropriate time. Motion?
You're good.
That's right, amendment, sorry.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you.
Does the administration want to comment on Bill 89-23?
Just briefly, thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Hujah Haseem from our Budget Office, and Kelly Kenny from our Office of Law. Unfortunately, Brian Schenk from Finance couldn't make it tonight. He was at the work session where we discussed this bill pretty extensively. I think everyone on the council knows how the administration feels. We understand and recognize that the council is the final fiscal authority on these matters. Our concern with this bill is not the, the subject matter, but really the fact that we do not know or have any way to really estimate how many individuals would be eligible for this credit in Anarundel County, and how it would be applied. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair, please have me, please have you as co-sponsor.
Seeing no other discussion at this time, we'll now-
Madam Chair.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Radvian.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were about to open the public hearing. I can wait. Is that what you were about to do?
I was.
Okay, I'll wait.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number eighty-nine dash twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
We will now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. I believe we have Mark Cicero here, waiting patiently to testify on the last bill of the night. Please come up to the table, state your name and address for the record, and remarks will be limited to two minutes.
I'm Mark Cicero, two thousand Rosetta Way, Davidsonville. So the way this bill is written is that it helps for federal agents, disabled federal agents, and Capitol Police officers to be exempt from property taxes like other law enforcement in the county. But unlike retired military, we cannot double dip. Once we get hurt and we get injured, we are set at that salary, seventy-five percent of that salary, and that's all we can make. If we make any more than that, then that salary would be deducted from our government salary for the rest of our lives. For example, if I made -- the government is now giving me fifty thousand dollars, and I wanted to volunteer or substitute teach at my son's school, and say I make five thousand dollars that year, the government would reduce my salary to sixty-five thousand dollars a year for the rest of my life because they prove that I can make five thousand dollars. So we're really limited on the income. We can't make any more than what we've basically been at the time that we were disabled. So that is why we're looking for breaks. Other counties and other states, I believe, have this. So I was hoping to incorporate it in Anarundel County. I moved back here after I was disabled because this is where I'm from. I would like to stay. So I appreciate any consideration.
Thank you. Sure. Is there any other individual wanting to testify on Bill eighty-nine dash twenty-three? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill eighty-nine dash twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number eighty-nine dash twenty-three.
Bill Number eighty-nine twenty-three. An ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, real property taxes, credits, disabled or fallen law enforcement officers and rescue workers.
We do -- there are two amendments. Was there discussion that we needed to have before those amendments, or can we move right to Amendment Number One? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment expands the definition of law enforcement officer to include a sworn law enforcement officer of the United States government who is authorized by their agency to carry a firearm and has statutory power of arrest and apprehension.
Ms. Ledbetter, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As currently written, this bill singles out FBI and Capitol Police. I heard from constituents a concern that choosing those two particular federal law enforcement agencies is, in effect, kind of choosing winners and losers. We have a variety of federal law enforcement agencies, and I agree that we should be treating them equally, and that's what this amendment seeks to accomplish. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration urged the council to reject this amendment. As we previously stated, we already don't have a way to assess the impact and how broad this would be. This amendment opens it up further. There are between seventy-three and seventy-six federal law enforcement -- or federal agencies that employ law enforcement officers in this country. I know we're all familiar with the more prominent ones that are under the Justice Department, like ATF and FBI, but there are things like the National Institute of Health Police in Bethesda. The Internal Revenue Service has a criminal investigations division. The military police also have civilian arrest powers. So there's a broad scope, broad, broad scope of federal agencies that employ law enforcement officers who would be eligible for this. And because of that, we really cannot assess the impact of how many of these officers would end up living in Anarundel County. Because we're close to Washington DC, I think we would have more than the average county around the country. But it's hard to -- again, it's something we can't estimate.
Thank you. Ms. Ledbetter.
I just would like to remind my colleagues that the language of this bill specifically applies to those who are disabled in the line of duty. It applies to those who are the spouses of those who have fallen in the line of duty. We're not opening this up to every single member of these law enforcement agencies. It is to those who have specific powers, who have decided to dedicate their lives to service over stealth, who then are injured or fallen in the line of duty in service. These are people who I think we want to encourage to be members, and citizens of Anarundel County in our communities. And I think that this is worth doing. It's also the right thing to do.
Mr. Volkey.
What she said.
Ms. Hammer.
So I'm not opposed to this. I just want to point out again, as Mr. Hunt said, we are giving a tax break to IRS agents, perhaps, if they came out there. So everybody just needs to realize that. But I do support this for fallen or disabled officers.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I'm wondering, is there any way that we could come up with an estimate? Because I really -- I like this as well, but I'm very concerned. As Mr. Hunt said, we are, you know, right around the corner from Washington DC. We have all kinds of folks that I think could fall into this category. You know, even when you're only -- when you're narrowing it down to the disabled in the line of duty, I still worry that we just have no idea. I mean, we don't have any sort of concept of where we're at. And, you know, I'm just being realistic. We are, from what I'm understanding, are going to be looking at a very tight budget year. So I just want to make sure if we do this, are we actually going to be able to pay for it?
Mr. Hunt.
I don't know that we do have a way to estimate that. I think, I mean, the Federal Office of Personnel Management handles some human resources for the federal government, but some of it is managed internally by different departments. So it would be a massive undertaking to try and figure out how many of them are living in Anarundel County. And I don't think we have any local data on that, but I can check.
Thank you. I just have a question for the sponsor. Is this amendment, in your opinion, broadening your original scope of the bill, or just clarifying the original scope?
It is broadening. Because it goes from FBI and Capitol Police to federal law enforcement officers who are authorized with the enforcement powers and to carry a weapon. So, I mean, to apply to IRS, it would have to be an IRS officer who has the authority to arrest and also carry a weapon. I don't -- I can't imagine that there are actually that many of those. So.
Who are also disabled, yeah, who are disabled or in the line of duty. Not disabled because they tripped over their lawnmower in their front yard, but in the line of duty, or paid the ultimate price for their, you know, service and lost their lives, and now
we have a surviving spouse who maybe wants to come home to Anarundel County and, you know, build his or her life here, and just wants to be able to afford to do so.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. This might be probably a question for the sponsor as well. And I apologize. This detail is probably in the bill itself, and I overlooked it or didn't see it. Do we have, you know, I know that, for example, when someone retires from the military, they're, you know, given sort of a percentage of disability. Does this limit it to a certain percentage of disability, like seventy percent disabled, one hundred percent disability? Or is it -- or is that left to -- is that left in the bill? Is it just disability? Because I'm just thinking of, actually, in the military, when folks separate from the military, it's very common. And I'm thinking of the number of people that would have, you know, the authority to carry a weapon and arrest powers would be like almost anyone that's served as an MP. So I'm curious.
I'm going to go -- MPs, I'm looking at my colleague, Mr. Smith, for subject matter expertise, but MPs are
Military police.
They're military police. Are they federal law enforcement, or are MPs
Military.
They're military. I mean, they would be veteran. They would qualify as a veteran should they become disabled. They wouldn't
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Why would they not be federal? Why would that not be considered federal?
The UCMJ Uniform Code of Military Justice is the statute that governs the laws. It's separate from standard government books, I would say. And so they are in place to enforce those laws. And so if they get injured, or they would fall under the VA, Veterans Affairs, so they would get a VA rating, you know, zero, ten percent through, one hundred, whatever it is, they wouldn't fall under the federal side of the House. They would one hundred percent fall under the VA rating.
Okay. So under the definition of this bill, they would not qualify, even though their employment really is through the federal government?
I mean, their MOS is -- and they have some certifications, but in this instance, because their VA rating applies to their veteran status, not their police or MOS duties.
Okay. Thank you. And so do we know, is that same sort of like range of disability, is that a part of the consideration when we're talking about federal law enforcement? Or is it disabled or not disabled?
So the intent of this bill, it's adding the federal law enforcement officers, this amendment would make it such, to the county code that exists that already applies to other definitions that we have. So I'm going to defer to the Office of Law on how, is there a percentage applied currently to existing law enforcement?
Sure. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. This is already covered by the existing law. It requires them to be permanently and totally disabled. So when an applicant applies, they have to provide all their paperwork to show that they
Okay. Thank you. So it wouldn't include someone who was -- I don't even know if this distinction exists in federal law enforcement the way it does in military separation, where you could talk about, you know, percentage disabled. Even if it did, it has to be, the person has to be totally disabled.
There's a different tax credit for somebody who is not totally disabled, but this one only applies if you're permanently and totally disabled.
Okay. Thank you. That does help me get my head around the fact that this is probably pretty narrow, but still, I, yeah, I'm just -- thank you. I appreciate it.
Any further questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment requires that the application for or for the renewal of the credit be made on a form provided by the Controller's Office and include verification that the applicant is eligible for the credit.
Ms. Ledbetter and Mr. Volkey. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Credit where credit is due. This was Mr. Volkey's idea at the work session. I just kind of jumped on it because I thought it sounded so good. At the work session, the administration voiced some concerns about workload as far as processing and knowing who qualifies and who doesn't. And this idea was born that the applicant should, you know, fill out an application and provide the proof to reduce the workload on the county. So happy to answer questions. Motion to adopt.
Is there a -- okay, there's a second. Does the administration have comments on Amendment Number Two?
We would urge you to adopt this amendment. We're fine with this.
Any further discussion on Amendment Number Two? Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Please add me as a co-sponsor on this bill. Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number eighty-nine dash twenty-three will come back as amended and will be heard on January second, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number fifty-three dash twenty-three.
Resolution Number fifty-three twenty-three. Resolution relating to the condemnation proceedings to acquire real properties located in Gambros, Maryland, for the purpose of the Towser's Branch Stream Restoration Project and matters relating generally thereto.
This is an administration resolution?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Eric Michelson, our Environmental Policy Director, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So this resolution was discussed previously at the work session. I won't go through all the details. It's pretty straightforward. There's a parcel that we need to condemn for a stream restoration project. The owner of record of the parcel is deceased. All their personal representatives and heirs are deceased, which is why we are moving forward with condemnation. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Michelson, did you have something?
No.
Oh, your light's off. Okay. We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution Number fifty-three dash twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We did not have anyone sign up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number fifty-three dash twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number fifty-three dash twenty-three.
Resolution Number fifty-three twenty-three. Resolution relating to the condemnation proceedings to acquire real properties located in Gambros, Maryland, for the purpose of the Towser's Branch Stream Restoration Project and matters relating generally thereto.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects an erroneous code reference.
This is your amendment, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is a good summary of it. It's correcting an incorrect code reference. We would urge your adoption.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Radvian. Second.
I assume there's no -- oh, Mr. Volkey, did you have something to say?
I just want to say, in honor of Mr. Barron, who's not here, to
No, he's here. He's
He is, but not to say it for himself.
He's here, but he's not here.
It's a longstanding policy of this administration to be against typographical errors in bills and resolutions. So we want to uphold that.
Thank you for that profound comment. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Mr. Smith, did you have?
Oh, no.
Okay. I don't see any further discussion on Resolution fifty-three dash twenty-three. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution fifty-three dash twenty-three as amended.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number fifty-three twenty-three as amended has been adopted.
Thank you so much. Is there any further business to be brought before the County Council at this time? Ms. Radvian?
Oh, not really, but I'll just make a motion for everyone to have a safe and happy holiday.
Okay.
And a motion -- with a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. The County Council is adjourned until January second, 2024. I wish all here and watching at home and in the county a lovely holiday season. May you find peace and joy in this time.